Have a motion to open the meeting.
So made.
All in favor?
Aye.
First item is chairman's comments. First item is chairman's comments. I do not have any at this point in time, so I'm going to go right into item number two. SP 15-003, 1634 Turnpike Street, Cumberland Farms Landscape Road Release Request. Bill?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have one of the people from Cumberland Farms. He sent me an email last month and he goes, "I want to get on the agenda for my release." And I'm like, "It's already been a year." So they lowered the sign, or I'm sorry, they raised the sign. They raised the welcome sign. They replanted, you know, literally everything and got the irrigation working. I did the inspection a couple of weeks ago. Everything's fine. I'm recommending that the barn be released.
Anybody have any questions and issues? Can I have a motion? Go ahead.
I was actually there a couple of days ago to get gas. I was there this morning just to check that out. Yes, the sign looks great. Not a fan of the flowers you put in there. But landscaping is done, and I'll just let it go with that.
Can I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to release the barn. Release the barn, as said.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good.
Thank you.
You didn't get a chance to talk, did you?
I was ready for it.
Yeah? Item number three. A continued public hearing we held to the petition of the site plan approval located at 1,000 Technology Park, assesses map 105, lot 2, in the I Industrial Zoning District. The applicant, BOS 5 Amazon Fulfillment Center, 1,000 Technology Center Drive, Stoughton, Mass., represented by Ryan McHugh, ASM Engineering Consultants LLC, 221 East Commerce, Andover, Kansas City, 67002, for site plan review under section 10.6.2 for the proposed construction of two new guard shacks, installation of automated gate system, reconfiguration, the site modifications to accommodate the two guard shacks. The proposed project will increase the impervious area by 4,356 square feet. The applicant has requested waivers in the sections of 10.6.10, B, C, D, and E Development Impact Report, not to provide visual impact, environmental impact, and economic impact, community impact assessments. It was continued from the August 22 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we still have not, I've given everything. The issue is all surrounded Rebach Drive, and we met with attorney. I've since met with our town council this morning. Given him, we've given him all the stuff, and we kind of reviewed some of it. He's having the real estate folks in his office look at it. I told him that this needs, that the applicant's requested a continuance to October 17th. So that's what I'm requesting, that you continue it to October 17th. And I told, and then the town council knows that he has to have a decision on the ownership and whether we can condition, whether, who's responsible for the Rebach Drive.
Okay.
And this has kind of been going on for a long time.
It has.
So I'm requesting, they've submitted a continuance request to October 17th, and Brian Winter, our attorney, knows that date, and he has all of the files.
Can I have a motion to continue this to October 17th?
So made. One quick question.
Go ahead.
On that, is there a limit on how many times they can continue?
None. It's, the limit is what the board's comfortable with, but the big issue, it's really been more on the towns and our legal and trying to get that. So we've been a lot of the delay.
Okay. Motion to continue as said till October 17th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry.
Okay. No problem. Item number four. Continued public hearing will be held under petition for scenic road permit located at 1616 Bay Road, assesses map 24, lot 8, located at the residential suburban RA Zoning District. The applicant owner, Theodore Vozella, 1616 Bay Road, Stoughton, Mass., for the scenic road permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 15C, for the proposed revision of the driveway location, which will require the removal and replacement of stone walls, vegetation within the town right away. Continued from 7/11 and from 8/22, 24 meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant can sit, get up. I'll kind of go over what we've done. We've met with the applicant. He did revise the plan, and I've gone over this with the town engineer, and we looked at some previous plans, you know, some are engineered, some aren't. We chose to look at recommending approval with the conditions that are outlined in the decision. I did email you a revised decision today.
I saw that coming in.
Essentially, we feel that, well, I'll kind of say, I'm going to go over the decision a little bit. It's, we're looking at, there's the special conditions, that they need to reconstruct 80 feet from the edge of the driveway southerly across the neighbor's property that was taken down. The wall needs to be a minimum of 24 inches high when the grade, when it's at grade. The grade drops, and that wall literally becomes a retaining wall at that point, and from the point it becomes a retaining wall, that we're requiring the stone wall to be one foot above the road shoulder grade. And the change, and then the other things, since it's not an engineered plan, we're requiring an engineering, they have to do the pre-app for the engineering, engineering inspection fees, inspecting the footings to make sure they're correct, and then inspecting the wall that's constructed, and then a final sign-off for engineering. The town engineer felt that that was sufficient. The issue that's arisen is, is that we've been made aware of that a portion of the wall on the north side of the driveway on his property has been removed. We have since verified that through dated, we have, we have a program called NearMap now. It's, it's a lot better than Google, and we can go back in time pretty easily and look at the perspective. And I'll just kind of show you the, pull this up. You can see the perspective of the wall here. Here's the tree that everyone's talking about, and then the wall comes literally to the driveway. So that's the older photo. And then this is, you can see, this is the tree, but you can see the wall is not extending to the driveway. So we added a condition yesterday that approximately five feet needs to be rebuilt on that side. So that's the change, and I'm available for any comments, questions, and I know the applicant is here, and so.
I'll give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like before we have any questions.
As far as the wall going on the other side, I have no problem, even though, like, I went when it was the meeting here last time, there really wasn't a wall there. I didn't take any wall down on that side. And that there, that wall, there was pieces of wall that were on the ground. No, I didn't take anything down. I had no reason to take that section of wall down as it's there, and it stays there. I haven't touched it. And it's actually fallen down right now, but not because of me. So I have no problem putting the wall back on the south side, even though there really wasn't a lot of wall there. Reason why I was over there is because there was a lot of brush there that we cut down and took down because we couldn't get out of, see out of our driveway. We did that, maybe a couple of rocks got moved, but I never took any rock, I never removed any rocks out of there. So I have no problem, I'm not going to argue. I'll put the rocks back. I'll have to get some rocks, because whatever rocks are there are still there. I didn't take them out. So I have no problem, when I saw him the other day, I told him I'd do the same thing. As far as that side over there, that wall was, it was falling apart. So whatever was, I put it to this side here on top of this wall right here, because that wall was all falling apart. I didn't take any wall down on that side because I had no reason to. That's why I was going to do the permit for that side to make the driveway on that side, I decided not to, because I don't need any more. I have an easement of so many feet on south side, and my driveway's plenty big enough. And as they can see it, I don't need any more entranceway.
So the condition that you're showing right there...
Right.
That didn't exist when you, when you started?
I'm sorry?
You're showing that that much wall was there. I don't know when, what was the year this was taken, that photo was taken?
I've owned the house three years.
Okay.
This says April of 2023?
April of 20, so last year, he's saying there was that much wall there. And then now there's, there's like, there's less than half of that there. It's all the way back to the tree. So in a year, I mean, that's where the question is, how much wall is in one place as opposed to...
No, no, I understand what you guys are saying, that's fine. But I mean, I didn't knock any of the wall down out of there.
Where did it go?
I mean, maybe it fell down over time. I don't, I didn't knock any down out of there. I took some of the wall and fixed the existing wall that's there now. I didn't dig anything out of there. I had no reason, there's no reason to. There's a tree there. Why would I, what was the reason?
Well, do you...
I don't know, I mean, like I said...
See, this is the tree we're talking about?
I understand.
This is the 2023. You see all the length here?
Yeah.
This is what it looks like today.
Okay.
So clearly, from here to about here has been removed.
So what am I supposed to, should I put some wall back there?
That's the condition. That's the revised condition. That's the revised condition.
Put some stones back there is what you're telling me?
Rebuild the wall.
Okay.
More than just putting stones.
Excuse me, I'm sorry?
More than just putting stones. You have to redo the stacked stone wall. So you have to build a stacked stone wall.
Okay, so, because that wall that's there, there's a bunch of small stones too. I can use that, I can destroy anything there I can? I mean, I'm just asking, if you look at this wall right here, the wall in front of my house, it's just a bunch of small stones stacked on top of some big stones. That's all I'm saying.
You may, you may want to get somebody to help you build the stacked stone wall.
I have no problem. I can build it, that's not a big deal.
That's all. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. As far as the other side, I agreed with everybody. I'm going to put the stones back on the south side, is that what it is? Is that what you called it?
Yeah.
Okay, the south side.
What he's saying is to rebuild the wall on the south side.
Yeah, but there's no, there was, again, there was no wall there.
We have a rebuild and reconstruct.
Okay, I got a photograph too from the DPW showing a couple of stones there.
It says, what the condition is, is the applicant shall restore, reconstruct the stone wall for a distance of 80 feet heading southerly from the edge of the existing driveway to the mailbox.
Right.
Okay?
But what kind of wall are we talking about?
They want you to replicate what's there, and also, I guess, part of it's a retaining wall. Do we have a plan on what, I mean, you mentioned something about a footing and that type of, you have a plan of what this is supposed to look like? Or you got to get an engineer to do this?
Yeah, the plan has a sketch of how to construct it. It's base material and then...
Okay. So they want you to build the wall per the sketch, per the plan that's sketched right here?
Okay.
There's a plan here, and there's a sketch on there on how to, what size the wall needs to be.
That's fine, I can do that down in that plan there.
The concrete footing is going to go in, and then the wall getting built on top of it, we're at the retaining wall.
The base that we're talking about? Three-quarter stone is fine for a base?
Yeah, you need a...
I can hear you.
Yeah, you need a stabilized base.
Yeah, so a bay, I can, I could put three-quarter base and compact it.
Yes.
And then I could get you guys to inspect it before I put the wall.
Correct.
Okay, so you don't, they don't want, you don't want a concrete footing? I thought that's what you said earlier. Okay, that's fine. Okay, so you understand what needs to get done?
Yep, that's fine.
So, any other questions from anybody?
Can, can we specify that it would be a dry-laid field stone wall with crushed stone as a base? I noticed that it's going to be 12, 12 inches high. Do we have a width on how wide the wall is supposed to be? Is it 18 inches, two feet?
I believe those dimensions were shown on the sketch.
I don't see it on the, I mean, I can use a scale.
It says one foot, one foot wall along, it's a one-foot wide wall along the roadway.
One foot wide? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah? Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody from the public want to say anything?
Yes.
Come on up, please state your name and your, where you, your address. Right up here to the microphone, ma'am, thank you. Just hit that microphone so the light is green.
Beverly Pellegrino, 836 Plain Street, Stoughton, Mass. I'm in a butter. Couple of things that you probably don't know is that Mr. Vozella was seen out on Bay Road with his mini excavator knocking over the stone wall that he claims wasn't there. There's an eyewitness to it, and she wrote a letter to the town. There was a stone wall there, and I've given the town a map that shows a stone wall all along Bay Road. Since, since you looked at that photo, Mr. Vozella has put a driveway to the left side. So he withdrew those plans from the town, said he was not going to add to the driveway, and he did. And this is part of driveway that he illegally put on my property. In the process of him retiring and widening his driveway to the north side, he toddled over a lot line, and he also toddled within five feet of the lot line, which is against the town bylaws. It's quite obvious. Now, I have a photo that you can all see. This is the driveway when he bought the house at 1616 Bay Road. Shows how close to the north side of the driveway it is.
Mm-hmm.
So he's installed a driveway that just said he did not want to widen his driveway. He installed it close to the stone wall, to the north side, that he is supposed to replace. This is the...
Those are the pictures you were showing?
Todd Drive.
Oh.
That he withdrew from the town that he said he was not going to put in. And he put it in, and then he came five feet over onto my property. He has only an easement to use that driveway. He cannot, he can also do his repair. Then he added five feet onto my property. This is the driveway. You see how close it is to the stone wall? He added that. He just sat there and said he did not. And this I want to show you is this. You saw how close it is.
So, let me just see this, so, so when the picture you're showing me right now, you're saying the driveway is over here further now?
No, no. This is the north side.
Yeah.
He has pushed that all the way back. Now, that stone wall is not falling down, but he pushed that all the way back, as you saw in that, right? And this is, this is the driveway. This is where he moved all of these stones out of here so that he could run his construction company out of a residential area. That was the purpose. He destroyed my phycia bushes, he cut down my trees, and trespassed on the property. Pulled out severe stakes, true times.
So that's this, that's this triangular piece of property where the two lots intersect, and there's an easement over that piece?
The lot line for the vacant lot comes across the driveway.
Right.
So he's toddled over the lot line, and he's also now toddled within five feet of the lot line, which is against the bylaws of the town.
Has this been brought up to anybody's attention?
Now, he had the same problem on West Street, and he just, he knows the rules, he just doesn't want to follow them.
Has this been brought up to anybody? I just don't know the research behind it.
If you look at the plan, there's a parcel C, which is...
A wedge.
Which, there's an easement there. The driveway currently exists across the property line, so paving five feet from the property line, you know, that's moot because the driveway straddled both Ms. Pellegrino's property and this property. There's an easement agreement for the driveway, so we can look at the driveway there. His initial application was he's just going to pull it all the way on his, and now he's choosing, choosing to keep it on the easement. If he has encroached further on the easement, that's a civil matter that I, you know, we've told him...
Right, I just, I mean, do we have a NASBIL drawing of what he actually did, or a NASBIL plan of what he actually did?
No.
The lot line is, comes right to the corner of this stone wall on the north side that cuts across the driveway.
So the matter before us right now is, is the damage to the walls and what he did on the, on the historical...
If he has encroached greater on her easement, you know, that's not, and I've told Ms. Pellegrino that that's a, that's a civil matter.
Right.
I know when we were out there, there's a picture of myself and the code enforcement officer, we went out to do measurements so I could finish the decision, and he was paving, and we, we had told him, "Don't pave," but then he, he went and paved. It's just kind of frustrating. You know, the code enforcement officer said, "Don't do anything until you get your permits." And the day we go out there to do some final measurements, he's repaving his driveway. So, but the matter before you, and there's other code, and mind you, there's other code enforcement issues. I know that the code enforcement officer talks about having commercial vehicles in the back, and he's, and he's supposedly, I guess he's worked with Matt on that and gotten those, gotten those out. He can have his vehicle back there, but not other people's vehicles, and that's what was going on. So the matter before you, and I hate to be very narrow-focused because there's a lot of other things, but the purview of the board is the wall was...
Well, no, the purview of the board is also the other items you're talking about. It is mainly, what before us right now is this, but the other items you're talking about is part of the purview of what we're, what we're into.
Because it all reverts back to the wall.
So go ahead, Mr. Pellegrino. You want to speak?
No, I'm just saying...
You raised your hand a few minutes ago, I'm sorry.
You have to come back up to the microphone, sir.
When I was in the last meeting, I withdrew my...
Hold my closer, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I withdrew my thing for the left, for the left side. I do have a 15-foot easement, and the asphalt that I put, I didn't know I couldn't do the asphalt, I'm sorry. I didn't come out to the driveway because I wanted to get a permit, and the DPW told me I didn't need a permit because TL Edwards is coming to me, and I didn't come to the, to the new roadway. So because I have that easement, and my driveway, the one I put in on the south side, is on the original driveway that was there. I didn't go anymore. TL Edwards put the, the thing in, but if you can see where they start, my driveway, the one I put in, is right on the original driveway. The original driveway is still there, I want, right on top of the original driveway. I didn't go over anymore. I didn't even encroach on the easement at all. And I think the driveway was like 20 feet or 21 feet. It's supposed to be minimum, maximum 24 feet or 23 feet. I got, I was told. And we're less than that. So I didn't encroach on the easement at all. I mean, I, like I said, originally on this, I didn't bring up the driveway. Originally on this, I cleaned up that side because we couldn't get out of there because of all the brush, and I knocked it down. Yeah, I did do it. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with this. So that's why I'm okay, I'm asking, I'm saying, okay, I'll put some sort of wall back, but like I said, it makes it sound like this was a huge wall. If it was a huge wall, I'll go out there with anybody, anytime, and ask them, and show me where the rocks are that I knocked down. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for, you know, I'm just asking, show me where the rocks are.
So anybody else?
That I supposedly knocked down.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak, speak on this matter?
Yes, I'd like to clarify something. TL Edwards did not add that five feet. He did.
All right, I'm not going to get into, ma'am, ma'am, no, understand...
I had just my driveway apron because they paved Plain Street. They do not go past the driveway. He did it. TL Edwards didn't, and I'll find out for you and let you know.
All right. The only thing we can do right now, what's before us right now is the, is the wall situation. We'll deal with voting on the wall situation, but I think we need to, you know, talk to the code enforcement officer about what else is getting done out there. And I don't know where that, where we stand with that. He's in the back of the room. We get a conversation for you. Come on up.
Can I ask one more thing?
Sure.
The code enforcement officer, the other day, when he said, he said, "Okay, there was a couple of trucks there that aren't mine. The reason why they were there is because we were doing the asphalt." Those trucks have, everything's been gone. Anything that's, my two trucks that are there, anything that's here is my stuff.
Okay.
And only my stuff.
All right. What was, what was the question? Oh, sorry, Matt Reposa, Code Enforcement Manager.
Hi, Matt. I just want to understand, we're getting differentiated, what's happening out there from a zoning standpoint? If you want, I just want to see what your take on it is.
So it's, it's one of those things, it's been going on for a while with the commercial vehicles. I've been trying to work with Ted to, you know, he's been okay as far as doing some of the things I've been asking him to do, but the wall's been going on for just as long. There was a wall there before. It was, it was a decent-sized wall. He knocked it down. He didn't do it on purpose, but he still knocked it down. The, as far as the other side of the driveway on the left side, it definitely looks different than it did. I've been out to that area for a year now, and I've been out there probably, I would say, eight, nine, 10 times, taking pictures, measuring things, and there definitely is wall missing on the left side that's, that's just recently been missing over the course of the last, I'd say, month or so. And I would assume in preparation of the paving of the driveway. That's just my assessment.
Anything else out there other than the trucks and the wall? Are those the only two issues that you know of?
Yeah, those are the only two issues that I've had.
Only two issues, okay. Well, on the matter that's before us, which would be the wall, I, I just don't, does the board have any other questions as far as what the restrictions, what the conditions are that we need to deal with with the wall, and anything that needs, that you feel needs to be added or taken away from? Go ahead.
All right, one of the questions I have is, you said that you removed some brush from the side of the property there?
The south side.
Okay. That brush, was that on your property? Was it in the...
No, it was not.
So you...
It was going along the whole south side of Bay Road, and it was actually coming out into the street. It's that bamboo stuff or whatever they call it. I don't know what you guys call it, what they call it. You can burn it, it comes back.
Right, but the, the brush, phycia is or anything like that? That being not on your property...
Well, it's actually town property.
Was it a town property?
It was, most likely, it appears to be in the public right-of-way.
Yeah, it's town property.
The wall is on town property, that's why they're here.
Okay. All right. All right. I don't feel comfortable in voting on this tonight. If anything, continue until we get some type of resolve, because we go around and around.
What are we gonna resolve, though? All we're focusing this vote on is just the wall right now. There is other issues that are out there, but we're gonna focus tonight directly on the wall.
Okay.
And then how the other issues get resolved is gonna have to be between Matt and the engineering department at this point in time. And if something else needs to come before us due to violations, then we'll deal with it at that point.
Okay.
I'm gonna deal, focus just to be dealing with just the wall right now so that that gets, that piece of it gets put away. He can rebuild the wall. He has enforcement to be able to do that. We have a plan in place to be able to do that. At least that gets him going on that much of it. That's the only reason I'm bringing, I'm trying to put this forward. Go ahead, Paul.
Is there a wall that was taken down where he cut into the easement also?
As far as the asphalt goes?
Yeah. No, that's the wall that's there. You can, there's a little bit of wall that's still up, that's just to the south side. It's right, his mailbox actually is within the easement. From the mailbox is the easiest marker. There's wall there. He didn't take that down because there wasn't brush there, and then he started clearing the brush. And when he cleared the brush, there was some wall that was kind of above grade, and then when he moved the brush, the wall that was, the section of the wall that was essentially like a retaining wall, a lot of that got pushed over when he moved the brush. So it's about pulling it up and redoing. A vast majority of this wall is a retaining wall.
Right.
A small retaining.
So we have no problem with the wall that was existing on the easement side?
No.
That's where it was and nothing was disturbed there?
Excuse me, no, he moved that wall too.
No, I didn't.
You can look at the picture I left there.
Correct. There's a section, the wall, the start of the wall is around the mailbox. As you move further south, yes, some of the wall that's above grade was taken down. So that's the condition, is you have to rebuild the wall above grade, and then as it slopes down, then it's the one-foot reveal. So you're restoring a full 80 feet.
We're dealing with both sides of the driveway, though, right?
And then the left side of the driveway, or the north side, which is his, which the revised condition is to add five more feet of wall, which would take it close to the pavement that he...
So I'm just, you know, my concern was that if at some point further down the road, they decide that the driveway needs to be moved over...
He comes back here. He has to come back here.
Then there'd be more wall that would have to be restored? That's my question.
If he wanted to move the...
If he had to move the driveway?
If he wanted to move the driveway, that was the original application. He wanted to move the driveway all the way over on his property. He would take out another 10 feet of wall and two trees.
Okay.
So he's revised that. He's keeping the driveway.
So we're okay with him...
There's debate on whether he kept the edge, the southern edge on the easement, and he expanded the driveway on his property.
I just have one more question. Ms. Pellegrini, so you're coming here and stating what you believe he's done. What are you looking for in the final outcome of what we're trying to do? Because we're trying to get him to put the wall back in place, which is really only our purview. I just want to understand, is the other part, that if he is on your property, is encroaching, we don't know that and we can't make that determination unless the surveyor was out there dealing with that?
Both stone walls on either side of the driveway.
Listen, I've never been told that I was quiet. Both sides of that driveway had stone wall abutting it, as you can see in that last photo that I gave you. That's a scenic route.
Right, so we're bringing, we're gonna have them bring the walls back to where they were, by historical, by historical photos that they have.
Right.
They're gonna bring the walls back to that location.
And that's a photo that you have, you could all look at.
Right.
Right. Alls I wondered was that, he never asked if he could cut down my trees, if he could drive over my property.
Again, we can't, those purviews we can't...
No, I understand that. You know, otherwise I wouldn't be here, you know. But, because he took it upon himself to knock down the stone walls and move his equipment in and out, the certain way he could get in the driveway with his big trucks and his mini excavator and his trailers. The only way he can get to the back is he had to take down those stone walls. And that's a scenic... That's a scenic route.
Sir, sir, just let him, please. I understand. We understand. That's why we're here with the stone wall. So we do fully, I just, alls I asked was, I just wanted to see what your expectation was about you being here.
The wall should be replaced exactly the way it was.
That's what, and that's what we're basically looking to do with the plans we're doing.
And you can see it in that picture.
With the way the plans are right now, with whatever the plans, we're going by historical records, with what they've done and what they've laid out, then that's what we're gonna go with this plan. Okay?
It's all we want done.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, can I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on the conditions that have been presented before us that have been amended in an email that takes the side, the left-hand side of the wall?
I make a motion that we accept the recommendations of Tom Plainer on these conditions as they are stated on them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Three yeses and one two noes.
So, just for Karen on there.
For Karen on there. Terry, Paul in favor, Dan in favor, Paul DeMuse, and Peter Murphy opposed.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm opposed.
No.
Paul Bellevue.
Paul Bellevue opposed, and Peter Murphy opposed, sorry.
Thank you very much. Move on.
Thanks.
You're welcome. You too. Thank you. Item number five, continued public, continued public hearing to be held to petition a site plan review at 120 Stockwell Drive, assessors map 91, lots 22 and 24, in an I industrial zone district. The applicant Costco Wholesale Corporation, Bushwood Drive, Sterling, Virginia, represented by Kevin Coffin, Esquire, Goldstein, One Post Office Square, Boston, Mass. A site plan review under section 10.6.2 for members only. Fuel facility consists of freestanding canopy, equipment enclosure, clerk loop, enclosure, and 12 dispensers providing 24 fueling positions. Continued from July 11, 24 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, this is going between two jurisdictions. The, they've gone before, we don't have any revised plans because they've been working with the Avon Planning Board on the access. Access, the access mainly is in Avon, and they've been working with Avon and Jordan's.
Excuse me?
They've been working with Avon and Jordan's, and so they're going to, once they agree to some layout changes and access changes. I know that the traffic engineer that we hired on behalf of Avon and the town, I've been, we've had several emails over the last couple days regarding some of the changes. Once, you know, they're satisfied, once the neighbors and the butters and the parties are in agreement, then they're gonna submit the revising. So they've requested a continuation to the October 17, 2024 meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Motion to continue.
It was you two battling. Motion to continue till 10, 10/17/24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item number six, continued public hearing to be held, a petition of applicant, in the petition of the applicant and owner, VFW Bruce Wood LLC, 540 VFW Parkway Suite 3 West Roxbury 02132, represented by attorney Barry R. Crimmens, 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. For the definitive subdivision approval under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81K-81GG and the Stoughton Land Subdivision Regulation to February 17, 1999. Their proposal was to create an 18-lot residential subdivision and related infrastructure waivers have been requested to Sections 4 Procedures for Submission and Approval of Plans in Section 6 Design and Construction Standards. The property is located at Zero Eagle Lock Road, assessors map 8, lots 16 and 17, in residential A zoning district, continued from 7/11 and 8/22 meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I received an email from Mr. Crimmens. He is requesting to withdraw this application. There is no more need for a subdivision because they have submitted for the flexible development. So...
Okay, so that will be coming up at a future hearing?
It has been submitted and advertised. I believe the first meeting will be on the 10th, on October 10th. So they have submitted, I know, they came to you with a flexible development and what we're doing. They've submitted a 20-unit, or 20 single, 20 residential. The 18 plus, they're doing two affordable. So, and I know we discussed that. So that has been submitted, and it will be on the first of probably a couple hearings will be on October 10th. So they have requested, there's no need for this, so if you could please vote on to withdraw this application.
So can we have a vote to accept their request for withdrawal of the application?
So be made.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set. Item number seven, continued public hearing to be held, a petition of applicant Charles Dow or Associates at 333 Washington Street, Suite 203 in 4, Boston, Mass., represented by Eric Diaz, PE Strongpoint Engineering, 340 Manley Street, Unit 2, West Bridgewater for site plan review under section 10.6.2 for Phase 1 Development of a Paved Driveway Associated Infrastructure Site Grading. The project is located at the west side of Turnpike Street in the 1700 block, approximately 500 feet north the intersection of Turnpike Street and Hawes Way, assessors map 96, Lot 2, in Neighborhood Business Zoning District, continued from the 8/28/24 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, he's on, the engineer is online. There were some minor engineering revisions that were requested by the town, by Craig. Those have actually been submitted. Craig's reviewed them, has approved them. I have a recommended conditions of approval that was emailed to you, and Craig and I are available, and I know Eric is online and he is available if you have any questions for this extremely complicated site plan review.
Anybody have any questions? Eric, did you, I know you're supposed to get Concom approval. Has that been finalized or did you get it on this project?
Yes, we do have Concom approval.
You do?
And the revisions that we were able to bring forth do not require us to go back to Concom for any amendment to their approval.
Okay. And the plans here reflect all the approvals from whatever Concom was requiring?
Yes. Yes, they do.
Okay. Any other questions in the board?
Is that the section on Turnpike Street as I go past Cumberland Farms Head?
Yeah.
And there's a section of guardrail?
Yes.
All right, so they'll be cutting into that section of guardrail?
Right, they need to remove a portion of that.
Okay. Doesn't that property drop down?
It does, that's why. That's the whole idea of the field they're doing.
This is, this is a mini ski slope.
Ah, okay.
It'll be, it'll be good for sledding.
The latest plans revise the grading of the driveway. I think originally had about a 9% grade coming off the road. They've adjusted that to about a 5%. So, much more manageable, realistic for future development.
All right, so that's more for future development, because they have no idea what's gonna go in there at this moment.
Correct, yeah.
This project is essentially to provide access, to make it better sellable, is what the applicant is hoping to do with this. To show people, you know, "Oh, we've already done the access and gone through Concom. You just need to come for a site plan for a development that connects to this driveway."
Okay. I went by there today and it's like...
Yeah.
Well, I think the whole point is that when you see it today, you say, "Well, this roadway, the topography drops off really quick. How would you ever access this?" And once they construct this driveway, you'll be able to envision that a little better.
Okay, no, it's a start. I get it, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? No? Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Item number eight, a new public hearing will be held, a petition of applicant Gene Caesar, 1141 Central Street, Stoughton, Mass. Requested by J.K. Homewarm Engineering LLC, Brockton, Mass. A site plan review under section 10.6.2 of the proposed development of 1,500 square feet building and associated infrastructure, site grading, and landscaping. The proposed use of the building is for an office garage and a house and the applicant's fuel trucks. Special permit per Section 9.3.4, F.7, and 10.5 for accessory usage of commercial vehicles, which are more than 3/4 tons required. The project is located at 19 Morton Square, assessors map 54, Lot 407, in Stoughton Center District, Flex Zoning District. Applicant, please introduce yourselves and state your case.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney John McDermott, Calabrese...
Could you turn the microphone on just across the button, it'll go green. Thank you.
There you go. Apologize. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney John McDermott, Calabrese Law Associates, here on behalf of my client, Gene Caesar of Caesar's Oil, Inc., the applicant this evening. Also with me is Scott Rogers of J.K. Holmgren Engineering. As you just summarized, Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed office and garage use for Caesar's Oil, Inc. They're gonna be relocating from their current location at 1141 Central Street in Stoughton. Business is a home oil delivery business. A lot of their customers are here in Stoughton and the Brockton area as well. And the special permit here, as stated, is for the storage of the trucks. So the design of the structure, as we'll go into more detail, is going to house two trucks, and they'll be making four trips each per weekday for a total of eight trips total per weekday, as well as four weekday trips for the office staff. There'll be one person in office. And beyond that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rogers, who's gonna speak as to the permit and site plan applications, some of the review design aspects, and the technical review comments from the town.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Scott Rogers from J.K. Holmgren Engineering. The property itself is 8,720 square feet. The topography of the site slopes from the street at about elevation 232 to the rear of the site down to about elevation 221. It is in the center, Stoughton Center District, in the Flex District. So as you mentioned, we are proposing a 30-by-50-foot garage with office space within. The site will contain three parking spaces total, two parking spaces, you know, standard, one also ADA, which will be van accessible. The parking area is gonna have a drainage system which will accommodate the roof runoff from the building, as well as the small parking area. That'll be an infiltration system located under the parking area. That'll be a storm tech or a cult tech system with deep-sump catch basins, drain manholes, and an isolator row as well. So we have shown on the plan water, gas, and sewer that we're working on, making some revisions too, based on comments from the town staff. We also prepared a sediment and erosion control plan which would show the construction exit, also silt sock and a silt sack within the proposed catch basin. It shows, you know, an area for parking, gravel parking for the construction vehicles, and also for trailer and, you know, porta-potties, those kind of things. Pretty comprehensive. Pretty comprehensive sediment and erosion control plan for a small site. And then as far as the landscape development, we did take into account, we have some butters specifically to the right, I believe that's the eastern side. So we are proposing some budding trees there, some screening trees back there. We're also proposing some shade trees within the parking lot and some wall plantings. There's a couple of small walls, there's one in the rear by the trash enclosure in that one parking space. That wall, I believe, is a foot to two foot. And then there's a slightly bigger wall in the front that ties into an existing wall that's on the budding property. That wall varies about between three and four feet, so not a huge retaining wall, but a retaining wall nonetheless. And they are proposing some planting within that, in front of that retaining wall in the street, just to kind of soften that view up a little bit. We did receive comments from engineering and town staff, and we're going through the process of making those revisions. So with that, we'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions this time?
So are you proposing that... I was by there today, and I'll say it's a very isolated area. If you don't know the area, you're not going to find it. But what I noticed, it was like a basically a hole in the ground at some point 50 years ago, there was a building there or whatever. So my question being is, are you proposing to put the garage under like underground, under the building, or...
They're raising the grade. They got a retaining wall. This is all retaining wall here, retaining wall here. They're raising the grade to create the parking lot.
Okay, all right.
The water table's high there, too. That's part of the reason.
They're increasing this whole area, this parking lot, they're raising it, I don't know, it's about five feet. Five, six feet in the rear part and a little bit more in the front part, and they've got a slope going along that area. So this is, this is slope from the street to the back, approximately six feet, but right now they get a retaining wall going along that area.
Yeah, no, we just, again, just seeing the site, seeing that it's, it was a pit, and it's like, okay, so... And again, there was, was a challenge to find the area, so I had to go down there personally to check it out. So the... I didn't pick up from the drawing because I didn't expand it enough, but are you saying offices will be on top of the...
No, it's a one-story building.
One-story, okay.
Office in the front, and then the garage area will be in the rear.
All right. And they say you have a five-foot sidewalk all around the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Or at least the front and the right side.
Okay. That public way is not a really, it's not a, it's not a real street. And does the town plow that, maintain it, or...
Yeah, the town maintains it.
Really?
I believe it does. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's...
It's a public street.
I wish I went down my Pathfinder, not my Honda Accord. All right, that's all I got.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, if it's a public way, is that planting infringing upon a six-foot setback? Is there anything from the road to the, you know, the regular easement that you get in most areas, there's six feet from the road to the property line?
Sorry, I didn't really understand your question, but in my comment letter, access to the site is an issue. The paved surface does stop along the frontage of this property, and we've requested that the paved surface carry all the way across the frontage of this property and be widened out. There's, on the bottom of the screen there, there's a wall shown that if they can pave that portion, I think they'll get about 18 feet of width there. So it's narrower than we normally see in public ways, but it's already an accepted public way, so...
Excuse me, sir. I'll open up to the public in a few minutes, all right? I have some questions.
Go ahead.
First of all, I will be accusing my... Excuse me. I will, my name is Richard Terry. I will be recusing myself from the vote because I have a family member who's in a butter. However, I do have some questions, and I was wondering, on your diagram C6, could you describe the entrance or exit in detail?
Say it again, I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Could you give us some insight into the area that's called stabilized construction exit?
Yeah, so typically with construction sites, they put in a riprap apron, if you will, so that when they're building these sites, they don't track sediment and dirt out into public roads. So that's the intent behind that.
And the second question is, where will your entrance exit be?
That hatched area that you see is where the construction exit is, and it's roughly going to be in the same spot where the proposed curb gut will be.
There's quite a grade there.
There's a grade, yeah. That'll be filled in about five feet or so.
To engineering, is that, that grade is considerable, particularly for... What kind of an oil truck is going to be in there? 3,000-gallon oil truck?
Uh, 2,000.
2,000?
2,600.
2,600, okay. You know what the gross vehicular weight is?
If, if, if the audience is, he needs to come up and state his name.
Oh, shit. Thank you, Mr. Caesar. Secondly, to engineering, considering the grade of the final versus and the size of the truck carrying oil, what needs to be done to make that acceptable?
Well, this, the retaining wall is over, is over four feet, so by building code, they're going to be required to put an engineered plan together to deal with that retaining wall before it gets built. So that would be part of the entire building process when that retaining wall gets submitted. That's a building code requirement, anything over four feet has to be an engineered wall.
Yeah, and as far as bringing up the grades, I mean, I know if you look at the site right now, it got quite a drop, but the proposed plan, the proposed surface is relatively flat, so they'll be, they'll be filling that quite substantially. Obviously, typical construction techniques, you know, with one-foot lifts and compaction as you raise up, it's achievable.
By raising that grade to accommodate the exit entrance, is that going to impact stormwater mitigation or exacerbate it?
So the grading has been designed so that it, everything is captured on site, so there's a catch basin. It does still flow, you know, away from Morton Square and towards the back of the lot. There's a catch basin sort of in front of where the proposed dumpster is. That'll pick up the stormwater and send it into the subsurface chamber system, which was designed to handle a 100-year storm.
Will there be a rain garden installed in here to accommodate the overflow?
No, they'll be doing it through typical pipe and, a catch basin pipe and subsurface drainage, yes. So no low-impact development features. The subsurface chamber system does have what they call an isolator row, which is a pretreatment device to get your TSS removal for water quality before it is recharged into the ground.
Okay. And just for the record, we did attempt to try to do a bioretention area on the site, but groundwater is relatively shallow, it just, just wouldn't work out, so we had to abandon that.
In looking at the record of the properties, the Morton Square, in parentheses, public way is in dispute, and it's not considered a public way in documents going back to the 18, late 1800s. So I think this drawing is incorrect.
So thank you, Mr. Terry. I'll be honest, I was unaware of that dispute. My research looking...
It's not a, I probably used the wrong word, not a dispute, but the record shows that this is not a public way.
So the...
And the property, butters, Murphy Oil, has owned that property prior to 1900.
Okay.
Continuously. And it's never been a public way in the documents that accompany the titles that are affiliated with Murphy Oil, your butter.
So I, I know that in my original application, when I had spoke with Mr. Roth initially, you know, our office did look at the deeds going back to the late 1890s when, I believe it was Samuel Paul, deeded part of that to the Boston Providence Railway Company, right, reserved a right-of-way for driveway purposes. It runs the length of Morton Square from Morton Street to, to our property here. So that's certainly, I believe, what's commonly used as the means of access. Each of those properties fronts on Morton Square. I'll defer to the town if it's the representation that Morton Square has been voted adopted as a public way, but I would have to look into that, so I can certainly...
I think you should look into it because the representative for Murphy Colan Oil is here with documents to state the contrary to that.
Well, I will say that, Mr. Terry, that in the documents, we briefly submitted to Mr. Roth. I mean, if, I'll certainly hear, hear the representative's comments, but I'm fairly confident, actually, I know it to be true, that again, back to the 1890s, that right-of-way, we've done that research, but we can certainly supplement those documents when we hear from the representative.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Or do you have any comments?
You mentioned that you're going to be catching all the rainwater and treating it on this, on-site. So is there something there to separate where you're going to have trucks containing oil in it? I'm thinking of, you know, there being oil dripping from the truck at some point that you can't help. Is there going to be something there to separate that so it doesn't go into the groundwater?
So inside the building, we have floor drains. We'll have an oil-water separator that'll discharge to the rear. The actual drainage system itself, there's a concrete pad next to the building. We don't expect the truck to be leaking oil, it's a relatively new truck. We also have deep sumps within the catch basins and pipes before you add to a manhole, and then we have an isolator row that's prior to the infiltration system itself. So if you look at the treatment train, if you will, there's a bunch of different things that can happen before oil would get into groundwater.
Mr. Chairman, I think, didn't get the convey, the thing is, is that the front portion of the building is an office, the rear portion is where they're storing the trucks, not outside, they're storing the trucks inside.
I, I understand that.
And the Board of Health has a whole list of requirements.
They have to have an oil separator.
In, in our technical review memo, the Board of Health has, actually, the most comments I've ever seen from them regarding the oil-water separator and the storage of the vehicles in there with the floor drains.
I'll stay in my lane, thank you.
Oh, no, no, it's, no, it's a great question. It's a very good question, it's just, you know...
Right, my, again, because let's, let's face it, the oil trucks, when they go get, get filled up, who's to say they don't get spillage up on top? They pull in the yard, it rains, it's going to, you know...
As the engineer had mentioned, the catch basin on-site is a deep sump catch basin for solids to settle out, but it also has a hood over the outlet so that when water does go in, the hood goes down below the water level so that the, anything oils and things will float on the top and not go out the, out the pipe.
And just to kind of take one step further on that, how often do they check setups like that? I mean, it, let's say...
As far as them having that component in there?
Right.
We do an inspection at the end of construction.
Okay, but ongoing...
There's an operation and maintenance plan that's submitted along with this application that gets recorded with the decision.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there a, is there a restriction on having vehicles parked outside? Any trucks on the outside of the garage?
You have the site plan review. If you wish to have that as a condition, you, you know, well, obviously, they're not going to prove it, you know, we're recommending, you know, that they need to go and address the technical review memo and a lot of other things, and any, any, anything that you have as a board that you see is in the public interest to please...
Do we have any architectural drawings?
We do. I think they were submitted.
Saved it up and submitted?
I believe they were.
I don't see them in the package I have, that's why I ask.
And I'd like to point out that the layout itself really doesn't lend itself to any outdoor storage. They have, the access to the garage is on the front face of the building. They have some parking spaces up near the office, and then there's another space down by the dumpster. The only other paved surface on the property is, is the access drive, so if they put a vehicle there, they'll be blocking their own access.
Right, but the, the issue is, they had talked in two trucks, and let's say during the wintertime, they have a booming business, so they add a third truck. Where's that third truck go? You know, it's...
We, we don't tend to expand, so it's only two trucks right now we have, so if we would have expanded, we would have to do it.
Right, but again, let's say during the peak season, you have a third vehicle, a third truck, whether you rent it or whatever, where does that third truck go? That's...
No, we don't, we don't plan to get another third truck, so it's only two trucks we are going to run the business on.
Okay.
If you can send those electronically to me, Scott.
So facing Morton Street, it's only going to be just a wall of building, there's going to be no windows, like just a couple of small windows there. It's just going to be, it's a metal building from what I understand from the application that you put in? I understand down the lower part of that street that it is a lot of metal buildings and stuff that are kind of hidden in the back, but that row of houses that are out there actually do exist, that there's residential properties on that street. I mean, it may blend in the back, but you're right adjacent to an existing residential property that's there, and there is a lot of other residential properties. I think the face of that building should look better than just an industrial face of building looking at that street. It just doesn't blend in with the way that that street continues on.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I did not, as you know, I look at commenting on that, I did not have the building plans submitted. I will have him submit it, I will review that. If you recall, the 84 lumber project, we required the base with some faux windows and other finestrations. I will work with them on doing similar to what we did for 84 lumber.
Okay, and then the other thing would be the landscaping drawings, there's not a colored drawing, rendering of the drawing. It has colored pictures for the trees, but it does not the entire drawing, it's not a colored drawing. The drawing itself is not, it's supposed to be a colored drawing as far as the landscape drawing.
Okay, I can look at that. I've always looked at the requirement as the color photos and then...
Yeah, no, the landscape drawing is what it is, but they're also supposed to be... Yeah, no, the landscape drawing is what it is, but they're also supposed to have a color, a colored plan showing the drawing.
We could do a proposed color rendering for that.
That'd be, that's all. Thank you. Is, can anybody from the public have any comments that they would like to make? Come on up, please, and state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Mark Terry from Murphy Colan Oil. I'm one of the owners. The Butting property has been owned by my family since the 1890s. My concern is, when we bought that property from Samuel Paul Railroad, we bought, with that came the right-of-way because that's railroad property. And my understanding is railroad property runs all the way up in front of 15 and 17 Morton Square. I have plans dating back to 1917. I have plans dating back to 1922 and 1943. They all show that as being the driveway for Samuel Paul. If you look at the Stoughton GIS map, it stops far short of where they're talking. Suddenly, for their plans, my entrance has become a public right-of-way. We've been there for almost 140 years, well, almost over 130 years. And when the Gouviers were selling 15, 17, and 19, they offered it to me for first. Reason being is Nelson said, "It's a landlocked piece of property. It's only valuable to you or to Alpha Chemical behind us. You know, would you like to buy it?" At the time, I wasn't financially in a position to do it. And I said, "I can't do that, but will you sell 19?" And he said, "I would love to, but the septic for 17 is currently on 19, so I have to sell them as a package." You know, that opportunity's passed. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. And actually, I've seen the plans. They're beautiful. I commend them on their plans. However, everything I can see shows that, not as a public way, but as my driveway. And it's, my concern is, they're encroaching on me. We've already had issues with just, you know, the guys that were figuring out the site blocked us. They were nice. I went and said, "Hey, you can't park here. We've got trucks coming and going." The guy was very nice. He said, "I'm sorry. I was told I could, you know, park here." I go, "Well, this is, this is the entrance. This is business." You know, a tree company showed up, five or six trucks, parked all over my property, blocked our trucks. And we said, "Hey, you can't park here." The owner told us we could park here. I go, "Great. When did we talk?" You know, I mean, they haven't even started doing anything, and my road is being blocked. I don't have a problem with the property, but, you know, I was told by the previous owner, the only access to that property is the right-of-way, the 10-foot right-of-way behind the building, where the building is going to be coming. Suddenly, it's now become a public road. You know, this goes back to, back when Larry Barrett was the superintendent, he came to me one day and said, "Hey, you know, I don't know if you know, but we've accidentally put easements across your right-of-way." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "That fire hydrant is in your road." And he said, "We had had a problem with something else, and while they were looking into that, they figured out the property, they said, "We've got easements in a couple of different places. We didn't even know we were putting it on your property. Didn't affect us." But, you know, we, there's a history here dating back over 100 years that's changed suddenly. And that's my concern, that, you know, before this is allowed, this needs to be hashed out. And I am waiting, you know, from my attorney to get the title search done, so I know exactly where it is. But it's not my understanding that that is a public way. I mean, your own GIS map doesn't show it as a public way. Can you pull up the GIS map here? I know GIS is not exact, but it's fairly close, but it stops at 17. And that, to my understanding, is actually even a little long. But, I mean, I'm sitting here with plans from 100 years ago showing something different, and suddenly, it's become a public way, and that's my biggest concern.
Mark, can you drive right through from Morton Wyman Street, drive through and come out to where your building is?
We own a 14.
And exit onto 138? Is that, is that like a continuous? Can you get through that whole thing?
You can by crossing Alpha Chemical, Alpha Chemical's property.
Okay.
You know, we, we have a, we get along well with them. We allow each other to pass because we're, we're in two tight spots, and we're in trucking businesses. We, you know, we've got a good neighbor agreement that we travel on their land, they travel on ours. But that, the only way for me to get around is through Alpha Chemical.
Actually, I took that drive today.
Yeah.
And like I said, it was a challenge to find the road through Google Maps and everything else. And I went and, as I came off of 27, just by the railroad tracks, and I'm following, and it looked like parking spots went off towards the left, and correct me if I'm wrong, but then that roadway, I went off towards the right. I found the hole in the ground this is going to be. And that's why I asked, is this going to be an elevated building or not? And then I followed down that path. I saw your yard.
Yes.
And then I took a, took a right, and I saw the chemical.
Yep.
Things. And then I followed that around. And again, it's basically trespassing, you know, but it's.
We get a lot of that.
What's that?
We get a lot of that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, like I said, it was a case of where.
Yeah.
I wish I was in my Pathfinder, not my Honda, because it's.
Well, it's, you know, there's a lot of commercial trucks that go through there, and that's, you know, we don't have a problem with it, but it's, you know, what, where he's looking to be, I don't have a problem with it. I just have a problem with the access he's trying to gain, because to my understanding, that's my right-of-way. I mean, I even have an attorney going back to 1922 saying it's, you know, our.
Well.
Free and clear, uninterrupted right-of-way.
Let me take this one step further. Right now, we have an issue over by Reebok Way or where BJ's is, that section of road over there. Nobody knows who owns it. Nobody owns up to it. So now, this roadway here, if it was to be paved, I mean, is that a case of where you're claiming it's your driveway, so to speak, would you be responsible for maintaining that?
I plow that driveway from 15 all the way down. Actually, in the wintertime, I plow a path straight through the MBTA lot because you can't, because I own right-of-way through it, and I can't really trust them to always keep up. I plow two passes through the MBTA lot, and then all the way down that road.
Right, but that's, and you plow that because you're interested in your trucks out there and all that.
We're in a 24-hour business.
Right.
And, you know, unfortunately, when the weather's worst is when we're generally needed most.
But if we flip ahead five, 10 years from now, when their trucks are going in and out and putting, you know, disturbing the road, so to speak, just as much as yours, it becomes, who's going to pay for that paving?
Well.
That's where I think.
Some 20 years ago, I tried to pave that road, and the town refused me because of runoff reasons.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, but my concern is, what you see here, can I, can I approach the?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will let you know that the yellow on the GIS shows as private road.
Okay. My understanding and plans I show, the, from right here is about where there's yellow posts that come all the way down. From right here, right down, is the driveway for Samuel Paul. You know, according to Larry Barrett, who's not with us, you know, that's hearsay, but he told me that that road technically stops in front of 15. Right here is where there's a fire hydrant. He told me, "We've, you know, we put a fire hydrant on your right-of-way." You know, Nelson Gouvier, who I almost bought the property from, said, "He couldn't sell me this lot because the only access legally to this is the right-of-way through here." You know, the owner that owned the place for 50 years said, "It's landlocked. It's useless. You can't get to this one from that one." But suddenly now, they've got a public way that goes to here. When we've got a history that's always said it didn't, how did that change, is my concern? Because, you know, I, you know, I've been maintaining from this point down, I personally have been maintaining for the company for 30 years, but we've been maintaining it since the 1890s. And now they want to say that this is public when it hasn't been. The town has never, they've never paved it. They've never plowed it. You know, they admitted to accidentally putting a fire hydrant on it, but, you know, but that's my concern, is how did this become a public road when it's always been my road?
Our GIS, this yellow means private. So, and you can develop on a private way. I believe that there's an access, you've raised an access issue that their attorney needs to, you know, if.
My concern is the access, not the building. I think it's a beautiful building, but it's, you know, it's already a narrow road.
And that's something that we, that's something that his, their attorney, and if you, whatever information you wish, you need to obviously submit to me so I can make it part of the record so that they can look at it and the board can look at it and determine, you know, what the access is.
So that yellow is denoting the private way or the public way?
Private.
Okay.
Not accepted by the town. It's still a way. It's just not accepted by the town so that we wouldn't maintain it.
Right, so the town doesn't.
And mind you, this is our GIS system.
Right.
And, and we have a listing of, you know, we have a listing of all roads that we've accepted, and we've identified roads that we haven't. Where he puts the yellow, our GIS, he probably just went, oh, he just put the yellow in front of the building. Who knows?
I understand that, but, I mean, till recently, that was never a public way, and it's sudden.
It's not a public way.
Okay.
So I said it's private.
But there's a difference between a private way and a driveway. And this being a private way, all that means is the town doesn't maintain it. That's, doesn't plow snow, doesn't pave it, doesn't grade it if it's a gravel road. I, when I bought my house, my lot, it was private at the time, and there was a bogus bond taken out on the property to finish the road. So town meeting appropriated money to complete the road, and then the road was accepted. So I was still getting trash pickup before it was accepted. They were actually, they were plowing it until it got accepted because it was a paved surface. It was just a binder course. So basically, private and public, it's not that big of a difference other than maintenance-wise from the town.
Right. And a private way is, you can still develop, and the town just won't maintain it. And private ways, and I'm not an attorney, is that, you know, they need to show that they, well, they need to revise their plans to say private way, not public. That's misleading. And so that's, that's easily done. And then they need to provide documentation that shows that they have access, that this lot has access to the private way. And, and I don't believe we're going to solve that tonight.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, is that, you know.
And, and they.
You take the time to make this right.
And that is an issue that needs to be resolved in addition to, you know, all of the site design issues. So.
I understand some of mine is just historic data that's been passed down through generations, and, you know, some of that could be right, some of that could be wrong. I just think that should be nailed down before this is approved. That's all.
Our review so far has looked at the physical access to the site, not the legal access. So if there's an issue with the legal access, then we need their attorney to dig into that and provide documentation that there's legal access to this piece.
And, and as you know, they did provide a whole deed research write-up, because I know, Mark, that you, he provided it at the pre-app stage. And, you know, you, as the Butter, called me and said, can, you know, I emailed you every document they submitted, you know, at your request. So, and if they submit anything else, we can get it to you too. But I've written it down.
All right.
I'm like, road access issues need to resolve.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern. Like I said, I don't have a problem with building. I just am concerned about.
Yeah.
Losing what I was, under the impression was my sole use. So.
One quick question is, how wide is that in front of the property that's being proposed? How wide is that roadway?
A little over 12 feet. It's pretty narrow.
Right.
You can't pass two vehicles. And everybody, it's, it's one of those things that.
Courtesy.
There's a give and take.
Yeah, okay.
You know, if you're halfway up the road and the other guy's more than halfway down, well, one of you is backing up.
The bigger truck.
Well, the bigger truck always wins.
So, so that would be a fired.
Big truck goes forward. It's, it's never been an issue. There's always been a lot of give and take. You know, that, that hasn't been an issue. It's, it's been like that since the 1800s, since we were running coal wagons, horse-drawn coal wagons out of there. You know, it's always been a narrow lane. But I just have concern about additional trucks. I mean, I've already been blocked, and they haven't even begun work by just the contractors that showed up, you know.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Do you have something else you want to say?
Do you want Craig to review the memo?
Yes. I guess at this point in time, you might as well. We've kind of gone through it. Might as well just get through it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Legal rights of access aside.
Wouldn't that also be a fired issue, getting down that road if it's only like 12 feet wide?
It's not a road.
Beyond this property, it's 12 feet wide to the existing business. In front of this property, my comment number three is that Morton Square should be widened and extended along the frontage of the property to provide sufficient access to the site. There's a stone wall shown on the plan. That's about 18 feet off of the existing property line, which would tell me that they have the availability to pave at least an 18-foot-wide pathway in front of their.
Okay.
Their frontage. We don't have a design to do that yet, so that's up to the engineer to come up with that. I, I thought in reviewing another plan that the, the angle of the stop line was a little weird. And I think maybe you were trying to go perpendicular to the edge of gravel right there, but I think it probably would just be better to, you know, swing that out adjacent to the property line. Yeah, that's fine. The property is proposing to connect into a sewer force main at the rear of the property, which goes down that other right-of-way that the Butter alluded to. Yeah, back one bit. So, yeah, right there. And then it ties into an existing force main that serves the residential property. That is a private line. You need to demonstrate rights to connect into that line. So that is, we're relying on the applicant to show that they have the rights to tie into that line as well.
Certainly.
Other than that, we didn't have an awful lot of comments on the site design. As I said before, the drainage is designed to capture the 100-year storm. It has pre-treatment. It meets all the requirements that we require in the Town of Stoughton and the DEP Stormwater Management Standards. The one recommendation we did have, actually, two recommendations. One's actually a requirement, to provide two feet of separation from the bottom of the system to the seasonal high groundwater table. I think there's plenty of elevation on the site to do that. It's just not designed that way at the moment. And then we'd like the addition of overflow tees for the downspouts, just so if there is any backup in that system, it, it won't bubble up into the roof gutters and things like that. So. And then they did not have a dumpster enclosure detail, so we'd like that to be added to the plan. And there was no detail for the segmental block retaining wall. We'd like that added to the plan so we can see what that looks like. Several other comments that are drafting or informational. Those are the ones that matter.
Do you have any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, perhaps if I could supplement. So I've certainly made notes as to the issues raised tonight. I believe Mr. Roth may be referring to our January 19th, 2024. January 19th, 2024 submission at the pre-application filing. So certainly, I, I was, you know, a little caught off guard as to the public way issue. However, hopefully, we can have some productive conversation with Mr. Roth's office and if Mr. Murphy submits additional materials, because our records show the opposite in terms of the right-of-way and access, but we can certainly brief that further for the board.
So I'm assuming at this time, your last word continues?
We would, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a date for that?
We only have two meetings in October, the 10th and the 17th, and in order to even get on the 17th, we'd need to revise things beginning of next week, so that's really not realistic. I believe that it's going to take a little bit of time, a little more legal issues. I believe we have a, next planning board meeting is in November. I'm just going to confer, because I have them on my map. Yeah, we do. We have one meeting in November, and that would be November 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I just spoke with Mr. Caesar. If we could actually ask for the board's December date, I'm actually going to be traveling, and I'm getting back internationally on the 14th, so I, just in case, if that's possible.
So you want to do what?
To ask for a December date, Mr. Chairman?
And we have one meeting in December, and that's December 12th.
December 12th? So can we have a motion to...
Motion to continue to December 12th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I did email the minutes for the meeting on the 22nd, and it's in your packet on your blotter.
I have, I've read the meetings. I have no comments.
Nope, neither.
While the other people looking that over, I do have a question for Mr. Roth. I see that there's work being done on Turnpike, I'm sorry, on Central Street and Washington Street at the proposed Chase Bank.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He was, oh, go ahead.
Did we approve that?
Yeah.
Yes.
He was sleeping.
I, I just didn't remember it.
I think it predates you.
You called it proposed Chase Bank, so you knew it was.
No, no, I was there, I was there because it's, I was in favor of it, you know, but
The board approved it several months ago, and then they had to go to Mass DOT for an access permit, which they dragged them in for stormwater improvements, which took a little while to iron out. They finally got their Mass DOT permit.
Okay.
Now we could, we issued a building permit for it.
All right, and then the other one was the, over by, on Central Street, Barry Quimmins' project over by, on the Sharon-Stoughton line?
Oh, the Dunkin' Donuts at 120 Sharon Street. They're actually going to, they'll be on the agenda on the 10th.
Okay.
Well, it's been approved. They are looking to move the dumpster, so, because they don't have a tran, there's a transformer in the back that they don't need, and so the dumpster doesn't have to be up close to the order window anymore. It can be back in the corner. So that, that'll be on the 10th for a modification.
Okay, I just happened to see those two projects moving forward, and I was starting to remember if we approved it, not approved it.
Yeah, they both have been approved.
Can I have a motion on the meeting minutes for August 22nd?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of...
August 22nd.
August 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.